Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our Planning Board meeting today, May 22. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Do we have any declaration of conflicts today? Seeing none, an approval of the agenda. Okay, moved by Jackie, seconded by Bob. And Sen is online, so all those in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. So adoption of the minutes from our May 6 meeting? Anyone want to adopt? Okay, moved Jackie, seconded by Bob. All those in favor? Great.
Aye.
Yep, thank you. I also would note that Counselor McCabe has sent her regrets this evening. And, okay, business arising from the minutes. Seeing none, we'll move right on to our reports. We have two this evening, and they're both for reconsiderations. And so I'll turn it over to David Gondrum, our manager of development planning. And this is for 20 Rawdon Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Chair Yankoff. I'll just wait for the presentation to load there, and we'll get into it. Okay. Good evening, members of the board, members of the public in attendance. The following application is an application for reconsideration of a site-specific exemption request in the R2 zone for property addressed as 20 Rawdon Avenue, PID 396937. This is a request for reconsideration of site-specific exemption to the existing zoning to allow for an automotive repair shop on the subject property within an existing single-story building. Subject property is shown as highlighted in blue here at the corner of Rawdon and Dartre Site-specific exemption request is intended to facilitate the conversion of the existing light industrial building, 325 square meters, to contain an automotive repair facility or automotive repair garage. The property is located at the southeast corner of Rawdon Avenue and Dartre Drive, located within the low-density residential R2 zone adjacent to established residential uses. Subject property, as noted, contains a single-story double-bay shop building that has been the site of a plumbing and heating business for many years and has operated under a legal non-conforming status through the zoning bylaw. Just an preliminary overview, the proposed change of use would involve the existing legal non-conforming use, plumbing and heating business, into one of similar scope that is focused on a different skilled trade being automotive repair. The proposed change of use would not challenge or alter the historic light industrial nature and character of the subject property, and proposes to introduce a new service to the site that would be a benefit and in proximity to local residents. The official plan supports creation of new industrial land uses in response to economically-based evolutionary changes in the community. And I'll just, the next couple of slides are a bit heavy on text, but this is just to capture the history of the application and context that brought us to today's meeting for reconsideration. So previously, in accordance with Section 3.10.4 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, on June 27, 2024, City Council approved an original request to proceed to public consultation for the proposed site-specific exemption. On June 28, 2024, a written notification was sent to property owners within 100 meters of the subject property, and a public meeting was previously held on July 10, 2024 to consider the original application. A total of 34 letters were sent to residents advising of the previous public meeting held on July 10, 2024 to solicit comments and feedback at that time. In response to that original circulation, two written responses were received, both being in opposition to the application. On July 18, 2024, a recommendation was provided to the Planning Board. Following the first public meeting, where planning staff recommended that Planning Board recommend to council at the time to approve the request for a site-specific exemption to allow for an automotive repair shop to be added as an additional permitted use under the existing R2 zoning, given the longstanding historical legal non-conforming light industrial pattern of use on the property. At their meeting on August 13, 2024, council denied the request for site-specific exemption to allow for the automotive repair shop by a vote of five to four, and it's noted that not all counselors were in attendance and present for that vote. Subject to council's vote to deny the application, the applicants appealed the decision to IROC on August 30, 2024, also making application to the City of Charlottetown for reconsideration of council's decision as per Section 3.15 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw. Up until this point in time, IROC has held the appeal and abeyance pending the outcome of the reconsideration request to council under the city's zoning and development bylaw. So furthermore, following council's decision to deny the application on August 13, planning staff brought a resolution to council at their meeting on October 8, 2024 to reconsider a reconsideration of the application and council's originally, original decision to deny under Section 3.15 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw. On October 8, 2024, council passed a resolution to approve reconsideration by a vote of six to four with all members of council present. Planning staff were delayed in issuing the mail notice for the new public meeting due to the Canada Post strike at that time that ran from November 15 to December 17, 2024, following Christmas holidays and subsequent concerns around timing to clear lingering backlog of mail in January due to the pre-holiday postal strike. On February 11, 2025, city staff issued a mail notification to all property owners within 100 meters of the property for a planned public meeting date of February 18, 2025 to rehear the application. In response to the February 11 circulation, one written response was received stating opposition to the application. It's noted that this letter of opposition is from the same property owner who responded in opposition to the original circulation prior to the first public meeting that was held on July 10, 2024. The new public meeting date of February 18, 2025 was subsequently canceled due to a storm event that day that closed city facilities, including City Hall and the planning building at 70 Kent Street. Following the aftermath of the storm event and related delays, city staff recirculated a new mail notice on March 6, 2025 to all property owners within 100 meters of the subject property to again solicit comments and feedback on the application. Total 34 letters were sent to residents advising them of the public meeting on March 6, 2025. They were mailed on February 20, 2025 to solicit comments and feedback. In response to the February 20 circulation, no written responses were received. At the public meeting on March 6, 2025, several residents expressed concern related to potential noise, soil contamination, and traffic safety impacts that could be generated by the proposed use. At the public meeting on March 6, City Council asked questions of clarification of staff and whether a development agreement could be used to impose conditions on the proposed use and help control for land use impacts. The staff response was that yes, a development agreement could be used in that regard. Just switching over to our analysis of the application and the reconsideration request, as per Section 3.11.1.8 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, council may approve a site-specific exemption to the permitted uses and regulations in any zone where the proposed site-specific exemption is not contrary to the official plan. The applicable policies and objectives contained within the official plan that offer some guidance to the placement of light industrial uses within more sensitive residential areas are as follows. Section 4.8.3, our policy shall be to ensure that all industrial uses have adequate measures in place to prevent or mitigate pollution that could threaten the quality and quantity of surface and groundwater resources and the quality of the air, including noise. Section 4.8.1, our objective is to create new industrial land use categories which reflect the evolutionary changes in that sector of the economy. Just an overview of our analysis, some positives concerning the application. The proposed use would provide a supporting local neighborhood service, automotive repair in close proximity to residents in the immediate area. And secondly, the official plan supports creation of new industrial land uses in response to economically-based evolutionary changes in the community. Neutral observation would be that the use would occupy a building that is otherwise and has been operated as a light industrial use for many years under a legal non-conforming status. Noted shortcoming that's emerged out of our analysis, as well as the outcome of the public meetings that were had, is that the proposed use has potential to create noise and vibration impacts due to operations unless appropriate mitigation measures are invoked, which could be codified through a development agreement as recommended. So to conclude our recommendation to members of the Planning Board, Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to council to approve the request for a site-specific exemption in the low-density residential R2 zone of the Zoning and Development Bylaw as it pertains to 20 Rawdon Avenue, PID 396937, to allow for the existing building, 325 square meters, approximately 3,500 square feet, on the subject property to be used as an automotive repair shop, and that an automotive repair shop be added as an additional permitted use for the zoning that applies to the property, subject to a development agreement being entered into between the applicants and the city. So that is a summary of the request and our analysis and context of the application, and I'll turn it back to the chair for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any questions, folks?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Sure, and just so everyone knows, we do have the applicant here today, so if you choose that you have questions as well as the applicant, you're free to ask those questions if you want while you're here, as well as if you're okay with the board maybe asking you a question or two, if that's all right with you. Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Sen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for David. David, the reconsideration, you know, application, is it right under the current bylaw, or is it some, you know, I'm assuming there is a provision for that, but is there a rationale for reconsideration, or is it just by mere right the applicant decided to put the, you know, the reconsideration application forward?
I can probably take that to start. So, in our zoning and development bylaw, any applications that come in for, through planning and heritage can request a reconsideration. So in this instance, the applicant requested a reconsideration, and it went on to council. And although it did not meet the threshold of a reconsideration because there was no information, and the other two parts of that, council still voted in favor for reconsideration, so that started the process all over again. So this is almost like a brand-new application because it's, the reconsideration started the process again, which is why it was prompted by public meeting, et cetera, why we're here today. I should note that the staff have the exact same recommendation as they had the first time around, so there's nothing that's changed in the staff's evaluation of it, I don't think. If there's anything more you wanted to add to that, David, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair and to Member Sen. The only thing I'll add to that is that the recommendation that I've noted tonight is consistent with what was previously recommended for approval back in 2024, however, with the added caveat that we recommend for a development agreement to be entered into to help control for any potential impacts for the use. That wasn't previously included in the previous recommendation prior to the reconsideration process having been applied for.
Yeah, thank you, David, and thank you, Madam Chair. Just wondering if it didn't meet the threshold, was it, was it any particular rationale that was put forward by the council for reconsideration, or just a matter of right, you know, the council decided that this application should be reconsidered?
Well, I think it was, as David pointed out, when the vote happened, there was only nine of us there. There happened to be full council this time. I think sometimes we struggle with reconsideration and the thresholds, and it didn't meet the three thresholds to reconsider, but it was still council's decision whether or not to reconsider, and they decided to reconsider. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. And I have another question, Madam Chair, is regarding the legal non-conforming. Now, I understand, you know, legal non-conforming is something which was legal, but according to the new bylaw, it's not legal, the use is not legal. And the whole idea is to let something continue in spite of the fact that it's not confirming to the bylaw at the moment. Now, isn't it, isn't it prudent to say that, you know, you know, the whole, you know, if, not to let the legal non-conforming continue in use, I know the nature of the business is similar and is changing, but it is still continuing the whole legal non-conforming use of that land?
Thanks, Sen. I'm going to actually turn that one over to David because, yeah, just going to turn it over to David.
Sure. Through the chair, Sen, to, just to try and clarify, what would happen here if the site-specific exemption is approved by council? It would actually make the automotive garage use a legal use on the property through that amendment. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be creating a new legal non-conforming situation, it would actually make it legal within a zone that it's otherwise not permitted. And also piggybacking on that, the existing heating and plumbing business that's legal non-conforming today, because it would cease to operate, cease to exist, that legal non-conforming right would actually disappear if that use is discontinued for, I believe it's more than six months is what's stated in the zoning and development bylaw. So if the site-specific exemption is approved, it would legalize automotive garage as an actual legal use, not a legal non-conforming use, but actual legal use, and that use would thereby replace the existing LNC use, and the LNC status would actually disappear if it's not, if the previous LNC use is not restarted within a limited period of time.
Thank you so much, David. That's great clarification here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Jackie. Thank you. Excuse me. My first question is more so out of curiosity. What was IROC's decision when the applicant appealed to them?
So that's still on hold. IROC is not proceeding until they see how the outcome comes of this reconsideration. So they haven't done anything with the file yet.
Okay. And then my second question, maybe not one to answer here today, but if I recall correctly, the last time we discussed this application at Planning Board, we had a really in-depth discussion about all of the different things that maybe could be incorporated into a development agreement, like noise pollution, like vibration. I don't recall what those are off the top of my head, and nor did I see them in the notes, but I'm wondering if maybe we could go back, identify what those were instead of rehashing them tonight, and then I would, I would hold the same opinion as I did the last time that this came up, that yes, could approve it with the development agreement component incorporated.
And with the development agreement incorporating in, those other discussions that we had back last year?
Yeah, like, I know that we discussed noise pollution, I know we discussed vibration. I think we also discussed stuff like unsightly premises, and there might have been a few other things that I can't, yeah, that I can't completely remember off the top of my head, but I'm just wondering if we could go back and find what those are and, yeah, and bring those forward when council's making their decision.
David, do you have any thoughts on that?
Through the chair to Jackie, yeah, we can certainly do that. The way we were to the resolution tonight, it's very general to say, you know, recommend approval, however, with development agreement and agreement. We could provide additional detail between now and when we get to council revisiting the minutes from the last meeting to say, well, what would that cover? Well, these few things that were pointed to during the public meeting or along the way, yep.
Great, yeah, I'd be very comfortable supporting that.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Beck.
Yeah, so just if I remember process correctly, the development agreement gets done between professional staff, like if this gets approved here, the development agreement gets hashed out with professional staff and the developer and does not come back for revisitation to council, correct? I understand that correctly. David, I want to go back to, I'm looking for some clarification. You were using legal non-conforming and legal not permitted when you were talking earlier there, and you're saying that if this goes ahead, the legal, it would be legal in a not permitted zone. Did I hear you correctly? And then, so what's the difference between legal non-conforming and legal not permitted? To me, those seem similar in nature, or...
So what that means is they are, they are applying for a site-specific exemption. So a site-specific exemption, if it's approved, gives them the, an exemption to what is legally allowed in that area, but it's no longer legal non-conforming, it's site-specific exemption. So it's like a spot zone. It's like, same term would be like spot zoning. So that little area of land would have a permanent permitted use of site for, for this type of activity.
As long as they're the owners of the building.
No, it's transferable with the owner. Yeah.
Transferable to the new purchaser of the property?
Yes.
So through the chair, Counselor Beck, if it's approved, the site-specific amendment would add an automotive, automotive repair garage as an additional permitted use that's not otherwise permitted currently, and that is written into the zoning bylaw for that specific property, and it runs with the property regardless of who owns the property. So it'd be still zoned as R2 with all the permissions for R2, plus an additional permission to have a use which is an automotive garage.
But if there was another use, it would have to come back here.
Correct, yeah. It would have to be that and only that. And I'll just differentiate a legal non-conforming situation as where there's a use that's been established through a pattern of use over a period of time in the past, and the zoning bylaw, it might have been permitted at some point in the past, or it was prior to regulations even existing to say you can do this, you can't do that. And it's just been consistently there for a period of time, but the rules changed such that it wouldn't otherwise be permitted, but you're allowed that right of legal non-conforming status as long as the use continues, even though the rules might not permit it. So that's sort of the differentiation there, yeah.
And so legal, what's your definition of legal non-permitted, then? What did, what did that mean?
Legal non-permitted would be simply you look at your zoning, you look at your list of permitted uses, and if it's not on that list, it's not permitted. Or if there's an explicit line in the bylaw that says these uses are actually prohibited, which happens, but generally what you see is what you get, and if it's not on that list of permitted uses, it's not permitted. That's what that would, would mean exactly. If it doesn't show up, it's not allowed, so, yeah.
Unless you get a site-specific exemption.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I, just to build on what Counselor Beck said, if this is, if this is approved eventually through council for this site-specific exemption, then we're adding on this permanent use in the site-specific exemption for an automotive center, correct?
Through the chair for automotive repair garage.
Okay, but we don't really have a list for that in our zoning and development bylaw. We kind of go from one to another, and it's my understanding, if you look at automotive center, that includes things like, like convenience store and Mel's, like the way Mel's is, unless I'm wrong on that. So my question would be like, what, if we approve this, what other things can happen in that area? And I'm not saying that the applicant is planning to do any of those things, but should it go with the land? What other things can they do, or can they not do anything else?
Through the chair, that's where the development agreement could help apply additional control over and above the zoning. So if there's a concern that this could, like you mentioned Mel's, for instance, that's not the intent here. I know that the applicants don't intend something like that, but to have as a safety valve, the development agreement, which would be a requirement of the site-specific exemption, if that's tied into that approval, that's where you could limit, limit it in language that's in the agreement, and that agreement is registered on title with the city as a party to the agreement, and the only way it could ever come off title is if the city allowed that to happen. So that's where you can have, it's almost like a shadow control that's hidden away, but it's on title that would supplement the zoning bylaw. It's like if you did restrictive... It's like if you did restrictive covenants in an area where there's no zoning bylaw, that's how you would mimic or artificially replicate what a zoning bylaw would do. It's a similar thing. You could dial it in additionally through the development agreement, so.
And so just to follow up on that, when you spoke of covenants, I've seen examples, you know, over the years, where covenants have been placed in various subdivisions, and they've, you know, years go by and they're no longer, they're no longer being adhered to, and so my concern is, for the councils of the future, how much is the development agreement, two-part question, how lawful is a development agreement for it to continue with that property, should it change owners throughout the years? And my second part to that would be, if it's not in the development agreement, what are the other permitted uses that could grow with that use? Yeah, those are my questions.
Through the chair, the development agreement, in this case, the city would be party to it, and it would run with the property regardless of ownership changes, so conveyance wouldn't affect it. And so because the city would be a party to it, the city then has their own control to enforce. So with covenants, a lot of times, the city is not party to covenants, it's private covenant between a developer of years gone by and a private property owner. That's a whole different case, where the municipality has no way to enforce because they're not a party to it. This is very different than that. I only use that as a loose analogy to say, well, it's something that sits on title as an additional control. And if the development agreement dialed in what is meant by an automotive repair shop to be very, even more exacting than what's more broadly in the definition in the zoning bylaw, you would defer to the more restrictive language, which is in an illegal agreement that's legally registered on title, that's basically like a legal instrument on title that would never go away unless the city had it taken off title, or an applicant, or a future owner requested that, but the city would have to agree to it to be removed, which, you know, who knows if we would do that, right? So, yeah. Does that answer the question? Yeah.
It was. Thank you. Thank you for that. Lee?
I was wondering, with this site-specific exemption, what exactly does that apply to? Can it be a body shop? Along with, you're saying it's a repair shop, mechanical repair shop, does that also take in body shop?
Through the chair, Lee, in the definition of the bylaw, it does. However, I know the current owners, the applicants, don't have an intent at present to do that. However, that's where I alluded to, the development agreement could really narrow that down. Alternatively, we could, we've worded the recommendation as we have, but the wording of the recommendation itself could be altered to be more specific as well. But having the fact that we've recommended development agreement, we're going to do that anyway, you might as well package it, you can package it inside that thing that we've recommended that should be done anyway. And that's how you could try and control for that, Lee, to maybe say, you know, a body shop is prohibited, and get very exacting on what this actually means, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So they would have to go back through the city for the...
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for that. Bob?
Yeah, I agree, thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Lee's question very much so, because I was out there yesterday, and there's a number of houses surrounding this, both sides and the back, and they're very close to that garage. And when I think of that garage doing mechanical work, that's one thing, but auto body work is a different thing altogether. And I know we discussed that last time, last year, whenever it was, and I can't quite remember, but I think you explained it there now, something that would be considered if that was to be used for that in the future.
Through the chair, Member Kenny, I'll just say, like, if the development agreement really locks it up in terms of like a standard general repair garage only, if anyone in the future wants to change that, they'd have to renegotiate with the city, at least with respect to the agreement, and maybe zoning if the zoning bylaw changes, which it will in the near future, so. There's some level of control there that we can exercise to try and protect for that, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for your question, Bob. You know, as we embark on the changes to our zoning and development bylaw, and should some of these permitted uses change, where would that sit, then? Say we had, say this was approved, and we had a development agreement that excluded the body shop and the convenience store, and the noise pollution, and the unsightly premises and all that stuff, and then we changed the zoning and development bylaw, where then does that sit with that development agreement?
Through the chair, if the definitions in the bylaw change in the future, so you create an agreement based on the definitions of the day, and some of those disappear or are altered in any way, or they're not present anymore in the bylaw, typically what happens in planning, you default to what the dictionary definition says, or, and I'd have to get a legal opinion on this, I don't know if this is actually correct, you could say, well, when was that agreement actually created? Okay, on this date, what bylaw was in effect at that date, on that date, and you would go back to the original bylaw and look up the original definitions at the time, perhaps? Because if the definitions change enough, you might end up in a legal, maybe in a legal nonconforming situation. That's how that happens, is that things in the bylaw change enough from a previous bylaw that what used to be legal becomes legal nonconforming. So a lot of hypotheticals there, but there's a couple of ways you could approach that, yeah, that are reasonable, and I've seen happen or used before, yeah.
I just would have one question for the applicant, if that's okay? Is that okay? I'm wondering if you've went around the neighborhood and chatted with the folks that live there, and if you've gotten any feedback from them. I know we didn't get a lot of feedback through their planning report, and I'm just more curious whether or not you've been in, a lot of times, on contentious applications, the applicant will go around the neighborhood and kind of hear what they have to say, and I'm just wondering if you'd be comfortable sharing whether or not you went around the neighborhood and maybe had any of those discussions with the neighbors? Would you mind going up to the mic and saying that, just for recording purposes? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did on the first application, and nobody had any oppositions about it at all. I told them what was going to be done there, clean it up the whole bit, and do a mechanical shop, like fix engines and stuff, and nobody had a problem with it, nobody.
Great. And you'd be probably comfortable, then, with a development agreement of some of the discussions that were had here this evening on some of the things that Jackie said, and about the body shop that Lee mentioned, and things like that?
Yes.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if there's no other questions, we have a recommendation from the staff to, for the board to support the staff's recommendation to accept this application and move it on to council. So I'm just wondering if anyone would want to put a resolution on the floor, and what we could do is add to it, I think he might have already had it in there, pending a development agreement, yeah, I think it's already, it's already in there anyway, so, yep, moved by Lee, and seconded up by Jackie. So the resolution is on the floor. Is there any questions to the resolution? If not, all those in favor of accepting staff's recommendation and moving it on to council? Sen?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Okay, and those opposed? Okay, so all in favor and one opposed, Counselor Beck is opposed, so thank you very much for that, and thank you very much for coming in. Okay, we can move on to our next agenda item, which is 18 Trainer Street. And again, this is our manager, David Gundrum, manager of development planning, so I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so the following application is a request for reconsideration of a building and development permit, specifically permit number 009 BLD 25, under section 3.15 of the zoning and development bylaw, which captures the reconsideration process under the bylaw. Just for context, permit 009 BLD 25 was issued on February the 25th, 2025, to allow for the construction and development of detached rental cottages on the subject property, addressed as 18 Trainer Street, PID number 889873. A copy of the site plan that was submitted by the developer is shown on the screen here, and I'll just highlight, the cottages are noted on the left and right of the site here, being 10 detached units, and there's also an accompanying motel development down here as part of the site, but the permit that was issued did not include for the motel shown here, just what the structure is to the north on the site shown here. Just some context for the site, the property addressed as 18 Trainer Street is an interior lot located on the east side of Trainer Street, as Trainer Street turns west and transitions into Katy Drive. Subject property is located within the highway commercial C2 zone, and is adjacent to established residential and commercial uses. Subject property up until recently contained a single detached dwelling that was recently demolished and removed, that's shown on the air photo, which was dated from last year. Some further site context, the subject property abuts a neighboring property to the east and the south, which is also within the C2 zone. The abutting commercial property addressed at 89 Malpec Road, located to the east and south of the subject property, up until recently did contain a combined motel and cottage development that was recently removed, and is proposed to be reestablished and redeveloped on the subject property, 18 Trainer Street, through the current permit and any future permits, i.e. for the proposed motel building. Other surrounding properties in the area are primarily residential in nature, being predominantly single detached dwellings on lots within the R1L zone. To the north of the property are abutting lands which are owned by the province of Prince Edward Island that form part of the corridor for the arterial highway, highway number one. Just some history to the application and further context, on January 3rd, 2025, an application for building development permit was submitted to the city for the proposed development, whereby the related permit was then issued by the city on February 25th, 2025, to allow for the construction and development of the cottages, 10 units, as noted on the site plan. A condition of the permit was included citing that the permit was for construction of the cottages only, and did not include the motel building, as noted on the plans, that would be subject to review and issuance of a future separate permit. It is also noted that the permit issued on February 25th, 2025, was a second-phase permit to allow for construction of the cottages beyond the footing and foundation stage. There was a previous related permit, permit number 308 BLD 24, that had been issued on November 19th, 2024, for foundations only with respect to the cottages. It's also noted that the previous permit from 2024 has been appealed to I RAC, but the appeal is being held in abeyance at the present time, pending the outcome of the reconsideration process for the related subsequent permit 009 BLD 25. Just to provide an overview with respect to the reconsideration process itself, in order for an application to be reconsidered, there are two stages to reconsideration request. When an applicant requests a reconsideration, the application for reconsideration is required to pass a threshold test. To pass the threshold test, the applicant must provide sufficient particulars in the request to show that the request falls within the stated grounds contained under section 3.15 of the bylaw. More specifically, section 3.15.3 of the zoning and development bylaw states that council may review, rescind, change, alter, or vary any order or decision made by the development officer or council, and council may reconsider any application under this section, provided that, A, new material facts or evidence not available at the time of the initial order or decision have come to light, B, a material change of circumstances has occurred since the initial order or decision, or C, there is a clear doubt as to the correctness of the order or decision in the first instance. If, after receiving a recommendation from the board, council determines that the request passes the threshold test, reconsideration will be given based on the merits of the application. The application is currently at that threshold test stage. Staff have reviewed the initial application and the grounds put forth by the applicant for the reconsideration. The requesting party for reconsideration is basing their request on the following grounds under section 3.15, being C, there is a clear doubt as to the correctness of the order or decision in the first instance. On the basis of, just switching to our staff review, on the basis of the applicant's submission, the permit was found by planning staff to conform to all requirements of the C2 zone that apply to the property. As well, building staff concluded that sufficient information was provided to satisfy the requirements of the National Building Code 2020 to support future required inspections under the code. On this basis, it was concluded that the permit was deemed to be as-of-right under the provisions of the C2 zone, and could be issued without any need for an application under the Planning Act that would require public consultation or a public process. The requesting parties for reconsideration also cite that it was incorrect for city staff to issue permit 009 BLD 25 on February 25th, 2025, due to the fact that the related permit number 304 BLD 24 concerning foundation works for the cottages is subject to an act of I RAC appeal that was filed, marked as filed and received by I RAC on December 20th, 2024. Staff opine that while these two permits are related to the same development, the act of I RAC appeal concerning the first permit does not legally bar the city from issuing for a related permit for the same site and same development, provided it was found that the permit met all requirements of both the zoning and development bylaw and the National Building Code 2020, and could therefore be confirmed as, issued as an as-of-right permit under both the bylaw and the building code. On this basis, there is no doubt, in our opinion, as to the correctness of the decision to issue the second permit, as it was found to meet all related requirements of both the zoning and development bylaws, as well as the National Building Code 2020. Staff further are of the opinion that had the city denied issuing permit 009 BLD 25, it's very possible that the city could have been held legally liable for denying a property owner their legal development rights under zoning, as the permit was found to be as-of-right and in conformity with all requirements under the applicable zoning, notwithstanding resolution of the outstanding I RAC appeal. So to conclude, the requesting party for reconsideration has based their request for reconsideration on the fact, on the statement that there is a clear doubt as to the correctness of the order or decision in the first instance. Staff findings do not support this claim. It is evident from the file materials that planning and building staff followed their standard review process and found that, number one, the permit met all related requirements and provisions of the zoning and development bylaw with respect to the C2 zone and any other related general provisions under the bylaw that may apply, and that, two, the supporting technical documents for the permit were found to be compliant with the National Building Code 2020, such that required future building inspections could be carried out on the basis of the submitted plans. Given these findings, planning staff do not recommend for reconsideration of the original decision of the city to issue permit 009 BLD 25 as it pertains to 18 Trainer Street concerning the construction of a cottage rental development on the subject property. Staff recommend the rejection of the request for reconsideration, as the grounds proposed for the reconsideration by the requesting parties do not meet the requirements of section 3.15.3 of the zoning and development bylaw. Should the requesting parties seek further relief, they may proceed with the notice of appeal that has been filed with the Island Regulatory and Appeals Commission for the related foundation permit, permit 304 BLD 24. So to conclude, the Planning Heritage Department encourages Planning Board not to recommend to council to allow for the request to reconsider a decision of the city to issue a building and development permit, permit number 009 BLD 25 as it pertains to 18 Trainer Street, PID number 889873 concerning the construction of a cottage rental department on the subject property. So that is a summary of the request, our review and recommendation, and I'll turn it back to the chair for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And perhaps before I open it up to...
Thank you, David, and perhaps before I open it up to the board for questions, we have the applicant here who filed the reconsideration, and to not put you on the spot, should you wish to speak first? That way then we'll have a, you know, culmination of the questions that we would want to ask.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, yes, and if you don't mind, just for the record, if you could just state your name, so that we have it in the public record. Thank you very much.
Okay. My name is Jerry Wolfrey. I'm a resident of Southview Estates, and I've resided there for the past 40 years. I am also the appellant in the 2024 permit that Mr. Gundrum alluded to, 304 BLD 24. And I wish to open by stating that what Mr. Gundrum just stated with respect to that appeal is incorrect. It has not, it has not been held in abeyance. In fact, our next meeting with city officials, me and the Iraq people, is on June 4th at 10:00 a.m. to discuss next steps in that proceeding, so I don't know where that information came from. It's not being held in abeyance. With respect to this reconsideration, it's a formal request under section 315, as Mr. Gundrum stated, where council may rescind, change, or vary any order or decision made by the development order or by council, provided that there is a clear doubt as to the correctness of the order or the decision in the first instance. In this case, the development officer knowingly approved permit number 009 BLD 25, the one subject to this reconsideration hearing, authorizing the developer to build 10 new structures on two foundations for a 17-unit cottage and motel development, which the officer knew, or ought to have known, was at the very center of a pending Iraq appeal decision, and as I say, an ongoing Iraq appeal decision. Furthermore, as stated by the manager of planning and development to me and other members of my community in writing, and I quote, "The matter is now before Iraq, who now transplant and take the place of both city staff and city council as the arbiters and decision-makers on the matter, and we will be standing by at this point to hear back from Iraq staff into February concerning their direction on the matter moving forward." And that information was given to us because we had approached planning with an alternate proposal for access to this cottage development, using the two existing entrance and exits that had been used for the past 40 years that I've been here, for this C2 highway commercial lot. Our subdivision is an R1L residential subdivision. It's not primarily residential, it's totally residential. There are no businesses, no apartment buildings or whatever in our subdivision whatsoever. So that was the advice that he gave us, saying he couldn't proceed or consider any of the alternatives that our residents had provided to them. Unfortunately, that sage advice was not followed, and this second permit was issued, authorizing additional development. The potential dilemma created by this incorrect order or decision is that if Iraq rules that the 19 November 2024 permit for development is null and void, and I believe we have a very compelling case, by the way, for that, for that appeal. So if Iraq determines that it's null and void, then we will have 10 city-approved structures built on unapproved foundations in an unapproved development. This second permit approval by city staff is a high-risk gamble at best, with potential consequence for an avoidable convoluted mess having significant legal liability consequences for the city. It was a bad decision, an incorrect decision. For greater certainty, our submission does not advocate that the city ought to have denied the application, as you referenced, for a second development permit for PID 889871, while awaiting Iraq's decision. However, we verily believe that at a minimum, no new permits ought to have been authorized by the city of Charlottetown while awaiting the commission's decision. This would also be consistent with the response that was provided to the residents of Southview Estates by planning staff when alternate solutions were proposed. We submit that any decision on the application ought to have been deferred while awaiting the adjudicator's decision, not approved, not denied, deferred. The city had three options to consider, as far as this permit application was concerned for 2025, to deny, to approve, or to defer, and we are not suggesting that the application should have been denied because of the pending Iraq decision, but because of the possible consequences detailed above, I certainly ought not to have, it certainly ought not to have been approved, it should have been deferred. We submit that the approval of permit 009 BLD 25, while awaiting the pending Iraq adjudication on appeal of a previous development permit for the same property, was an incorrect order or decision, falling within the criteria enunciated in section 315, 3C of the zoning and development bylaw. We therefore submit that this does in fact meet the required threshold for reconsideration hearing by council with respect to the approval of building and development permit 009 BLD 25. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, for that. It should just be noted, too, you folks probably aren't familiar with this file, because it's never been here before. This was not a council decision, this is what, as David referred to, as an as-of-right. The staff would have approved these permits from an operational perspective, as they stated. So therefore, it's an interesting, probably the first time we've actually had a reconsideration coming to a planning board, that actually a planning board has never seen before, and that it wasn't originally reconsidered because of a council decision. So this is actually a reconsideration based on an operational matter where staff have approved a permit, and now we have folks that are able to come forward and put an application forward for reconsideration. So I just wanted to let you know that, don't feel you don't remember something, because you wouldn't have heard of this before until today, so, which is why it's great that the applicant for the reconsideration is here, for anyone to want to ask questions for them as well. So I'll just open it up for questions to start.
Question, Madam Chair.
Yes, just one second, Sen, Jackie's just going just before you. Go ahead, Jackie.
Excuse me, thank you. Just for clarity, what is, when you say it was being held in abeyance, what does that mean, and how does it relate to process?
I'll take a stab at it, but it just basically, what that means is, it's just, it's sitting in limbo until other decisions are made, so therefore, it doesn't, it doesn't have to adhere to the 30-day deadline and things like that, it's just, it's waiting, but I think there's, David, if you want to add a little to that.
Yeah, through the chair, what it means is that, and we've seen this before, where Iraq will have an appeal that's been submitted, but if they're aware that this reconsideration process has been activated locally through the city, they will basically pause their process until they get a word on what's the result of the reconsideration process is, because they both kind of seek to achieve the same thing, but in different ways, at different levels. My understanding, and I just want to reflect on Mr. Wolfrey's statements, I don't recall being notified myself of an upcoming hearing or mediation date from Iraq for this particular file, this June 4th date, I think it was stated, I'm actually not aware of, I haven't been invited to as far as I recall, but it's not to say that Iraq might not have its own meeting with the appellants or the parties themselves, I just can't recall being notified of that personally, so. But to answer the question, abeyance basically is a synonym to mean something's been put on pause in this instance, yeah.
Yeah, just on that point, the Cox and Palmer have been notified, whether they notified you or not, I don't know, but they will be attending the meeting on the behalf of the city. And your question was about the abeyance. Under 315 of the reconsideration in our zoning and development bylaw, we wouldn't be able to proceed with a reconsideration request if the permit, the permit that we're asking reconsideration for wasn't held in abeyance. But this is a separate permit, this is the 2025 permit. So I'll just say that we gave consideration to the abeyance issue. Consideration of this request and any decision by council to revoke this permit has no bearing on the Iraq appeal and vice versa, just as the actual approval of this permit had no impact on the progress or any decision on the Iraq appeal. We therefore submit that the conditions outlined in section 315.7 do not apply to this reconsideration and development permit 00925. But if we were asking for reconsideration on the one that we had before Iraq, we would have to ask Iraq to hold that one in abeyance, in order for us to ask for reconsideration. But we didn't, we didn't ask for reconsideration on the first one, because we weren't provided the required public notice. So time had run out before we found out that the development was proceeding. That's part of the Iraq appeal as well.
Thanks, Jerry. Sen, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a clarification, I think it's a bit confusing, because I believe on the same PID, there are two development permits, one, I believe for the motel, and the other one is for the, that was issued for the structure of the 10 cottages. Am I correct on that, Madam Chair?
No, I think the two permits, one is for the footings for the cottages, and then the second permit, which is the one that they are looking to have reconsidered, is for the actual cottage structures to sit on top of the footings. This is absolutely, from what I'm understanding, the motel is not under any kind of discussion in this, in this file, unless I have that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, the question is, which application, is it the foundation that is currently being discussed at Iraq, appealed at Iraq, or is this the one, the permit for the cottages that is, or both the, or both the permits are being appealed at Iraq at the moment?
Jerry?
Yes, the, the initial permit for development and for the construction of the footings and the foundation for a motel unit and 10 cottages is being appealed to Iraq. And, you know, there are many, many, many issues with respect to that. This particular reconsideration request applies only to the second permit that was issued in 2025, which was for the construction of 10 cottages, onto the existing foundations that are under appeal, and that's, that's, that's the problem with the whole thing. We have the city approving the construction of cottages, not knowing whether or not Iraq, or what the decision of Iraq will be with respect to the approval of the development and the foundations in the first instance.
Yeah, thank you so much. Madam Chair, just a point here, I think, I think there is a bit of confusion, because it's on the same subject matter, although there are two development permits. One that is, you know, subsidies at Iraq, you know, and I believe, if I understand Manager David Gundrum properly, the abeyance is on the first permit, which was on the foundation of the 10 cottages. Am I correct on that?
The 10 cottages and the motel, right?
Motel, yeah.
David?
Through, yeah, through the chair, to clarify, Sen, the first permit that was issued last year was for the footings foundations only, basically, these are like slab-on-grade, they're not like a full-out foundation, but it's like a slab. That was the first permit, and the second permit, as you mentioned, was just for the remaining structural components, but for the cottages only, like the framing, insulation, roof, all the interior, like the whole fit up past the foundation stage, but only for the cottage units, not for the motel.
So the abeyance must have been on the, on the first development permit appeal, right?
Correct, so there is only, as I believe Jerry alluded to, there's only an Iraq appeal with respect to the first permit from last year, which was for the foundations only, that's the only matter that's before Iraq right now, and then reconsideration is only with respect, at least at the moment, for the second, what I call the Phase 2 permit that was for the remainder of the bill that was submitted, or issued, rather, February 2025, yeah.
From a rational point of view, David, if the first appeal, which is the first permit and the second permit are directly related in this case, and if Iraq is already making a decision on the first appeal, I don't think, I don't think, you know, even if, you know, just from a bylaw point of view, there is as-of-right, I don't think, if the first appeal fails, the second permit doesn't really sustain in itself. Could you clarify on that?
You could, through the chair, Sen, could you clarify what you mean by that? So if the first permit doesn't, Iraq doesn't.
So let's say, let's say, you know, Iraq decided against the city.
Correct.
And this is again, you know, and then the second, you know, permit which is being issued and which we are currently discussing for reconsideration, the second permit would not stand on itself, because Iraq had made a decision on the first permit, and the second permit would not sustain, because the second permit is basically to build further on the foundation.
Through the chair, that's, in a practical, logical sense, that would be correct. I would imagine that Iraq has awareness that there's more than just one permit, so I would imagine, although the appeal is only with respect to the first permit, they would, they would have, if they issue an order to reverse the city's decision to issue, I would speculate that they should address matters beyond that, that probably relate to the impacts to any related permit, I would imagine, even though that other permit's not subject to direct appeal, but you can't decouple the two from each other, if you make a decision on one, it would affect the other, you're correct, yeah. But again, I would defer to wait and see what Iraq's decision is, because I don't know how they would navigate that in a functional, legal sense, to be truthful.
So I think the second, in this case, I think the second permit, in my opinion, should be reconsidered, because, you know, because a decision on the first permit is still under, you know, review at Iraq, and I'm not sure, are we allowed to defer this? And I'm not sure, are we allowed to defer this, Madam Chair, or?
You're wondering if we can defer the reconsideration decision?
Pending Iraq decisions, yes, on the first application.
I, I think that this board can do, you know, whatever they wish, so if this board decides that they, they, their recommendation to council is to defer the, I don't think, we, we can't say we want to defer the permit, we can only say we want to defer the reconsideration because that's what we're here to talk about, so I think our only option today is either to accept staff's recommendation and not, not recommend reconsideration, or not accept staff's recommendation and, and, and believe that council, and recommend to council that we do reconsider the second permit. I think those are our only two options, correct? David?
Through, through the chair, I'd offer, there's really three options, one, agree with our recommendation, two, disagree and go the other way, or third would be a deferral to see what happens at Iraq, and then we would revisit this pending that outcome. So there's really three, three options I would off, I would, I can think of, so.
So just?
But didn't Iraq say they weren't going to make a decision until our consideration was done? Am I, did I understand that correctly?
No, Iraq is not even aware that we're asking for reconsideration on the second permit, they're just dealing with the first permit for the foundations and for the idea of the development, dealing with things like land use buffers and that sort of thing that, you know, we've stated our case on. But I will state on the point, you're, you're, you spoke about a moment ago, Madam Chair, the Iraq, when they, when we registered our appeal, they notified the developer that the appeal had been filed and that any action or any further development undertaken by the firm, from that date forward, they would be doing so at their own peril, should our appeal be successful. The problem with issuing this second permit is it, it now gives the developer an out with respect to that. It's no longer at its own peril because the city told them it's okay to go ahead, which was contrary to what, to the advice given to developer by Iraq.
Thank you for that. I was, I had a question. Somebody else want to have a question till I can remember my question? David, you have your hand up, you go ahead, if you want to follow up on that, and then Counselor Beck can continue on. Go ahead, David.
Through, through the chair, I just want to offer that, again, like Jerry, Mr. Wolfrey, Jerry is completely correct that the builder has full awareness that they've been warned by Iraq that they proceeded at their own peril, at their own risk. Subsequently, when we issued that second permit, we also, in a similar fashion on the city's side, told the applicant, we have no means by which we can withhold this permit legally from you, notwithstanding that there's a matter at Iraq, but we also warned them similarly that any proceeding at all is at your own risk, although the fact that we issued that permit gave them additional permission to carry forward with the subsequent phase of the development. But they were warned by us as well that there are matters at play here that might overturn this, and they're fully aware of that. I'll also note for the record that we did receive a legal opinion from our legal on March 19th of 2025, it's not noted in the report, but Cox and Palmer, we asked the question around the issuance of the second permit, whether the matter at Iraq, like just to clarify legally, whether that provides a roadblock to our issuance of the second permit, and the answer was no, that, that we, we didn't do anything illegal here, we made a call that, you know, we had no reason to stop us from issuing that permit because it was found to be as of right, it met all the technical requirements, and for that reason, we found we had no means to deny them, and we, we've cross verified that with our lawyers, although that legal opinion came after the permit was issued, so.
Just before you go, Counselor Beck or Jerry, so what would we, if we have three options and one's deferring, what are we deferring? We're not deferring the work being done on the cottages, we're just deferring whether or not we would consider their, their reconsideration, because the work is going to continue on, whether we defer, accept, or deny, if I'm correct?
Through the chair, you are correct, the only bodies that I'm aware of that could stop this would be Iraq through a legal order, or if, notwithstanding what may or may not happen at Iraq, the, the appellants in this case, I'll say, appeal to a higher court to issue, to seek an injunction or, or a court injunction, basically, on, on what's going on here, but that, that hasn't been triggered, so.
So just before I turn it over to Jerry and Counselor Beck, so if, if, if that's, if that's the information and that's the, you know, part of that report, I would think that should probably be included for council, because if this goes to council and council thinks that they actually have the decision power in this case, it's almost going to be perceived as, as political interference, because it's not, it wasn't a political decision, and now, so now we're taking an operational matter and politicizing it, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but go ahead, David.
Through the chair, and I'm, I'm not trying to derail here, but just to clarify on process from tonight onwards, whatever recommendation Planning Board makes tonight is then put to council, and if, if council decides that the reconsideration process should in fact continue, we follow the same process for reconsideration that we do for a rezoning application, so this is really asking if, essentially this is kind of asking if we should proceed to public consultation, so it would go from tonight to the next council meeting, if council actually, if they defer differently from staff and say, yes, we should proceed with reconsideration, then we mail letters out to everybody within 100 meters of the site, and we hold a public meeting about it, and the, the recommendation to actually approve or deny the reconsideration actually would then come back to Planning Board, back to council again. So right now, staff are saying that we don't feel that this has met the thresholds in the zoning bylaw, and therefore we should basically stop it now and not do a public meeting, is what we're basically saying. But I just wanted to lay out what the whole process actually looks like, because we're, this truly isn't a recommendation on an actual yes or no, if that kind of makes any sense, so. A final decision is what I'm trying to say, yeah.
Right, and so I'm imagining that if council says yes to a reconsideration and we go to a public meeting, how is the public going to understand that council didn't make the decision in the first place, all we did was make a decision on a reconsideration? It's, 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 it's rather perplexing and confusing, and really confusing to the residents. I don't even have a question, just a statement.
Well, if I understood it correctly, again, reconsideration in a C2 commercial zone is not, there's no public consultation process involved in that, am I correct?
Through the chair, Counselor Beck, the reconsideration process itself follows the same steps that, like a rezoning does, so there has to be a public meeting, like what we did recently for the 20 Ralden file, we had a public meeting back on March 6th, that, that was actually a public meeting related to reconsideration, actually, and like, in that case, the site specific exemption was what was being reconsidered, but we basically ran it again, is what, and what, that's what's being asked for here, is if we should run the whole process all the way through, that's what the appellants, I'll call them the appellants, are asking for. Staff are saying, well, we don't think it passes the threshold, therefore you should basically stop right now. But if the board or council differ in an opinion on that, which is perfectly fine, we would then proceed along the steps, hold a public meeting, then provide a recommendation out of all that to Planning Board, that would then go to council to make an act, to actually vote on it. So really, we're, right now, tonight, we're just trying to determine whether the process should actually continue or not.
But we're, we're asking for reconsideration, part of the reason that the building permit on 20, on BLD 25 was because it was deemed as of right in a commercial zone and did not require a public consultation. So now we're saying we're going to go and have public consultation on a, on a as of right that does not require a public consultation, that, it seems to me the horses are out of the barn here right now. I drove by it today, and, and I mean, you've got eight of 10 of the cottages, or all 10 cottages, I think are built up, around there. The motel site is, the, the old office building is still in that corner, but everything else seems to be there, so I don't know whether, I think we're, in some ways, I just feel that we're, the discussions have been had with the developer, that if they go ahead and they build, they're doing so at their own peril, that was, that was articulated by Iraq, it was reinforced by city planning staff, and the original grounds is based on the footing, which directly impacts BLD 25, when you're issuing the permit for the building coming up, so. In some ways, I just feel that we, you know, I feel, like, you know, you were talking here earlier, Jerry, I know about looking at an alternative entrance and exit to the property, and I think if that had been able to be, and again, I'm not part of this, and I, I'm working on no information, but in driving up there, if I'm looking at a commercial property that abuts onto a residential property, if that could have been accommodated, that might have changed the whole situation and dynamics here. But I have no idea, I have no background in that, I'm just kind of presupposing some things here, so. I guess where I'm at right now is, I think we, we've got a commercial zone that was done, the building's gone, the buildings are pretty much up, and I think if Iraq comes back and tells us it has to be stripped down and reverted back, well, that's Iraq's decision, and I don't think that, I'm really feel that I'm in a, a situation where I can offer a lot about this, to be, I'm being honest here. And I just think we're coming in a little bit late to the game, and I think some things are a little bit too far gone at this point.
So before I turn it over to John and Jerry and to Mike, the, the challenge is, is that it's, this reconsideration process is, is, is being tested, because it's, it's clear that the applicant can ask for a reconsideration to council, but the problem is it doesn't align with her zoning and development bylaw of the application that was as of right. So you've got two, two things happening that don't align, and here we are. And so you're right, it's, it's, it's rather, it's rather confusing. Mike, if you can add anything to that, Director Mike, and then Jerry and John, you guys go ahead next. Thank you.
Thank you for the chair, I think you've kind of covered the points there, it is a bit of a unique situation for us, I don't know that we've received a reconsideration request for a project that has been approved at the staff level or as of right, meaning that there's no discretionary approval process required to go through Planning Board and council, so that's why this would be very new to Planning Board and likely for council as well. Ultimately, you know, staff follow the existing bylaws set in place by council, so when we receive an application, we review it against the bylaw, and if it meets the test of the bylaw, then a permit is approved. If it, you know, goes beyond the bounds of the bylaw, that's when we would bring, you know, an amendment request forward, you know, those discretionary approval processes. So that's kind of why we're here today, staff issued a permit for a project that doesn't require council approval typically, and reconsideration was sought effectively an appeal on staff's decision in that case.
Thank you for that. I would just note that it's, it is interesting, we've gotten, you know, now though, as Counselor Beck said, the horse is out of the barn in the sense that we now have information on a, on an operational matter that we can't un, un, unthink, unknow, we now know, so therefore, it's, it's a tough one, but Jerry and John, go ahead.
Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board, I would like to point out that this is not unprecedented, in that we were here in this very room about two or two and a half years ago, with a request for reconsideration for a building permit that was issued as of right, and we were successful in our request to city council, and that's why the development that was planned for that location at that time is not there. I think it's important, and I know that we're not arguing the, the merits or the harm of the very first building permit that was issued, but I think it's important for the Planning Board to realize that, you know, the, some of the basis of our appeal to Iraq is because the city is trying to create a precedent-setting situation where a C2 highway lot flows all of its traffic into a R1 zone. To the best of our knowledge, that does not exist anywhere else in the city of Charlottetown. There's one situation that's somewhat similar, but it's not exactly the same. So that's an important, and that could be a precedent-setting action by the city that has a massive impact on every R1L zone in the city. We have, from day one, suggested, well, first of all, from day one, we have not been opposed to what's going on that lot, although the owner of 1 Katy Drive might argue that case, as the value of their house has been dropping by $50,000 a month, but we've not been opposed to the develop on, on the lot. Our opposition has to do with all of the traffic that's coming from that lot into a residential neighborhood. We have suggested from day one that the developer should have struck a deal with the new owners of the land that was previously owned by the same developer in order to have access to Malpec Road. That seems to have gone nowhere when we have suggested it, we've been given excuses that, oh, well, we can't really talk about that because it's under appeal, yet the fact that it's under appeal doesn't stop other things from happening. So I think it's important for our Planning Board to know why we oppose the development in total, basically, from an access and egress standpoint.
Thank you for that. Just a clarification, I, I, I was, I'm very aware of the last time we did this reconsideration, and, but that was a council, that was a, that was, that was a council decision right from the get-go, that wasn't an as of right, I don't think, John, or, I mean, you know the files, I mean, I'm not disputing what you know in your own area, but I thought two years ago when we did this, that was, that, council followed that through right from the beginning.
No, that, that was clearly explained to us, particularly by Counselor Duffy, that it was an as of right.
That was announced. It was announced, yeah.
That it was an as of right situation, because we were quoted that it could be a marijuana shop, it could be a transfer company, there was a lengthy list of really objectionable things that could go into our neighborhood because of the fact that that permit was going to be issued as of right, so it was.
Okay, well, here we are, what, oh, Lee, go ahead.
I was just wondering, Chair, David, you mentioned something about deferring until Iraq made a decision?
Through the chair, to, to Lee, that's an option that could be considered, it's not what staff's recommending, but it's an, it's an option available to the board as an alternative, yeah.
Can I put that on the table?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Sen?
If I may speak. Madam Chair, am I audible?
I can, oh, yeah, we can hear you, great.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Madam Chair, I, I think we're somehow mixing, you know, issues here, you know, we're not talking about, you know, you know, about whether the development is, 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 you know, you know, it's not a council decision, as you mentioned earlier, it's a, it's a staff level decision, but I think there is some- But I think there is some sort of a process of procedural juxtaposition here, you know. My consideration in this application would be, you know, if there is no injunction order from IRAQ on this development, and the development is going forward, so in that case, the staffs are, you know, within their right, accurate to issue a second development permit. And their recommendation not to reconsider is reasonable. However, the Planning Board has to take other things into consideration, you know, as it has been laid out in the Planning Act and the, so, given the fact that IRAQ is making a decision on the first application, first permit, I think, I don't think, you know, there is any harm to wait until that decision is made. And then we can make an informed decision whether to reconsider or not to reconsider the second development permit. And if the planning staff can throw some light on that, that would really help to make a, you know, decision, at least in my case, it would help me make a sound decision.
Yes, Chair, the issue with this reconsideration is a very simple one. This permit ought not to have been issued while that IRAQ appeal was being heard. And again, going back to Mr. Gundrum's own words, "The matter is now before IRAQ, who now transplant and take the place of both the city staff and city council as the arbiters and decision-makers on this matter, and we will be standing by at this point to hear back from IRAQ staff into February concerning direction on the matter moving forward." And what happened right after that? This permit was issued. He couldn't consider the alternate access that we had been suggesting since 2020, when the first reconsideration thing went through. We were saying, there's three developments there. There's a U-Haul property being developed, there's these new motels, which, by the way, the foundations were built to accommodate the existing buildings that were there, and they were sold to the province before the permit was ever issued. They were supposed to go back and get another, make another application to build these new structures. But that's a separate issue, that's part of the IRAQ thing. With this one, it's just the simple fact that the matter is before IRAQ, why, and given the sage advice that Mr. Gundrum had stated to members of our community, to then turn around a week later and issue a second permit that then authorizes the developer to go ahead, despite what IRAQ said, if you go ahead, you do so at your own peril. The city says, well, we're going to okay it anyway. So what we're saying in this reconsideration request is, that was the wrong decision. That's what comes to Part C, there's a clear doubt as to the correctness of the order or decision in the first instance. And I can't imagine that the members of the board sitting here don't have a clear doubt as to whether that order ought to have been issued while IRAQ was weighing the factors submitted by the city and the residents of the community.
Thank you for that. So if it's my understanding and question to David, a deferral would not really speak to the question of whether or not a reconsideration should happen or not, because if we just defer it, we're just leaving the decision of a reconsideration while meanwhile, then the developer continues to develop and complete their work. So, does that make sense?
Madam Chair, before that decision is made, I just want to have, if it is reconsidered, there is no stoppage order on the work. The work will still continue unless there is a court injunction order on this development. Our process, as Manager David Gunter mentioned, that even if we go for reconsideration, let's say the council, the Planning Board recommends reconsideration, and the council decides on reconsideration, that reconsideration, if so facto, does not stop the work unless there is an order.
That was my point. The horses are out of the barn here, and I don't know whether, I don't know how we, I don't know how we wreck, I don't know how we get out of this, other than having a third party make the determination. Because Jerry is, and company are staunch in their views that they have a strong case. David and the planning staff have, are very resolute in their views that they did due process, they adhered to the bylaws, they issued the permit in accordance with their bylaws. So we've got two camps that cannot come to agreement. And I'm supposed to make a decision on something like that? That's not an easy thing to do. And I really, I feel badly that we're in the situation that we're in. I just don't know, I don't know the path forward. And I think what, I guess what, one thing I would like to know is, if we defer today, are we deferring, are we just deferring this recommend, we're just deferring a decision on the recommendation of staff? That's what Lee is proposing here. Am I correct? That we're not making the decision, staff is coming here with a recommendation to not proceed with a reconsideration. So what we're, what Lee is asking here today is to defer a decision on that recommendation pending what IRAQ says about the June 4, 10:00 a.m. hearing that they have coming up. Am I understanding your motion correctly, Lee? Is that what you're asking for? Okay.
So if that's Lee's motion, do I have somebody that wants to second it so that we have the question?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, so Sen is seconding that. So now, we have that motion on the floor. Now we can speak to that, to better understand that. Jerry, you wanted to speak to that?
Yes, because in the meantime, it's business as usual out on the corner, where they're building these new cottages. Money is being spent, a lot of money is being spent. I like the suggestion made by the counselor a few moments ago. The solution here is obvious to everybody, and it's been suggested by the residents from day one, that the route to access this commercial development ought to be through the C2 zone where it is located. And that they have two egress points onto the Malpec Road, that's been there, as they said, for 40 years. They chose not to use them and to instead go into a residential subdivision with this commercial venture, which went before council four years ago. And they decided that, no, this C2 highway commercial zone should not be, you know, accessing the very heart of a residential neighborhood that's been there for over 40 years. It, you know, there's so many safety issues and everything that we've identified with that. And to just kick the can down the road if we decide, or if the board decides to defer it, allows that to go full steam ahead. And as you mentioned earlier, you know, it, there's no turning back. The pressure is on, and that developer knows that the pressure is on. That's why they keep proceeding with this development, because it makes it more difficult to stop. But I will point out that on the first application that they had for the entire development, it was for the original Royalty Maples cottages and motel that was located in that zone to be moved back onto that lot. But before the permit was issued, the motel and cottages were sold, and it became a completely different venture, which has become part of our case before IRAQ. As I say, there's 29 pages of rationale that we had before them. But on this point, it's just the fact that we're issued, a second permit was issued while the residents have appealed before IRAQ, and IRAQ is considering the concerns of the citizens. It's making it more and more difficult all the time for the people to have to make a decision in the end. Now, perhaps, you know, if a decision is made that we don't want that exit onto Malpec Road for some reason, I don't know why. As I say, 17 motel units, it's the U-Haul unit and the seniors home next door could all use one laneway onto Malpec Road. Instead, everybody's building their own laneway and another one into our subdivision. This is still a C2 highway commercial zone. Seafood Express, Midland Transport, anybody can still tear down those cottages next week as quick as the previous owner did, move them, and all of a sudden, we have a trucking company on Katy Drive, Trainer Street, right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Makes no sense. Thank you.
So a deferral, you know, if this board decides on a deferral, it doesn't go to council, is that correct? Because it's deferred? Or does it still go on to council because the two recommendations are different?
Through the chair, that deferral would then forward to council at the next available meetings for council to confirm that, because Planning Board recommends, gives advice to council, yeah.
So if the board, if this board decides to not do a deferral, but instead not accept staff's recommendation, but instead forward on to council, that they recommend a reconsideration, as Sen pointed out, does the work still continue on, whether we defer or recommend a reconsideration? Does the work still continue regardless whether it's a deferral or a recommendation to, for reconsideration?
Through the chair, that's correct, because as I laid out the process previously from tonight, let's say the board recommends against staff that reconsideration should go ahead, and council confirms that, then the next step would be that we would hold a public meeting to listen to the public about the request for reconsideration. Then we would circle back to Planning Board again with a recommendation whether reconsideration, the permit actually should be reconsidered, essentially overturned by the city, and council would then vote on that. But the work, as far, like, based on the legal opinion we were provided, the owner can still continue proceeding because they're technically still under permit, until the point that council would fully reconsider and ask that that permit be rescinded. That's the point at which the work technically would have to stop, because the owner or the builder no longer has a legal permit. So as long, like, a permit's been issued, it's still in effect, until that is rescinded one way or the other, by either by IRAQ, by the court, by the city, the builder can still keep going, even if this process is still underway and hasn't reached a conclusion yet, so.
Madam Chair, just a point to be made here, you know, even if there is no appeal on the second permit so far, and, you know, the applicants, and I understand the concerns that has been raised by the gentleman speaking on behalf of the resident there, you know, appeal could easily be filed, and, you know, I'm just concerned about the city process at the moment. And, you know, as I noted earlier, and something that has been reiterated by the manager of Planning and Development, it doesn't stop the work, because at the end of the day, I don't think the city has any right or power to execute that order. And if so, then kindly clarify on that point, David.
Through the chair, Sen, I'm not aware that the city can, like, through the reconsideration process, they, you know, if that's successful, the city could ask for, through that request, that the permit be revoked, and then at that point, essentially, the work has to stop. But in terms of ordering any of the existing work to be undone, physically undone, my understanding-
So the-
My understanding is that there'd have to be further procedure from there, like, there'd have to be a court order to compel that, would be my understanding, so. But that would be at the discretion of council ultimately, possibly as part of this process.
But if this-
Correct.
So if this goes through a reconsideration, and council votes in favor of a reconsideration, and it goes to a public meeting, and back to staff, and back to Planning Board, and then back to council, at the end of the day, if the reconsideration is successful, all it's really doing is giving the staff the ability to do the application all over again with potentially the same conclusion, because the applicant's goal here is, as they stated, they're not so much, you know, they know it's a C2 zone, but what they're questioning is, why does a C2 zone get to come in through a residential area when they could access off of Malpec Road? I don't even know if that's what we're supposed to be talking about right now, but that just seems to be the big hurdle. And as Counselor Beck said, how in the name of time do we get there? Because a reconsider, like, anyways.
Madam Chair.
Must be frustrating for everybody. I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead, Sen.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is where I was, you know, I agree with, you know, Member Lee's resolution, because IRAQ could very well make that decision, you know, to allow for that access to the, of the commercial zone to the highway, rather than it going through the, I think that would be a bigger part of IRAQ's decision, and I'm not privy to that discussion at the regulatory level, you know, at IRAQ. However, I think, I think a lot of clarity would come from the decisions made by IRAQ. And if there is a mandate from, if there is an order from IRAQ, then there is no point for the city to go through another process. So it is, in my humble opinion, better to wait until a decision is made, and, because irrespective of, you know, what we decide today, whether we defer or we decide to, the work is still going to continue unless there is an injunction order from the court.
Thank you for that. Okay, well, if there's no other questions on the actual deferral, oh, Jackie, yes.
Question, is the June 4 meeting, does IRAQ plan to make a decision at that meeting, or is that for a different purpose?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your question.
With respect to the first permit and that appeal, at the June 4 meeting that you mentioned, is IRAQ planning on making a decision at that meeting, or is the meeting's purpose different?
No. No, the purpose of that meeting is to discuss next steps with all parties to the appeal. And if you follow any of the IRAQ business, some of, many, most of their cases take over two years.
Yeah. Yeah, I feel really, like, personally compelled to agree with you. I think it's striking that there's 198 people that signed your petition. I think that what you mentioned about precedence is really striking. I think that maybe, it seems to me like this is an instance where the city plan has maybe failed slightly, like, having a commercial zone, abutting the residential zone with no provisions for access, that the reconsideration process doesn't have any option that concerned citizens can bring forward. You know, the issues that they're noticing, or that there isn't any other way to pause this process. But I also do feel as if the city, and confirmed by their lawyers, followed their process as well. So it is a bit of a he-said, she-said, with both sides having merit. Again, personally compelled to agree with you, and I want to see resolution for you folks, but I kind of agree with Counselor Beck, is that I don't know at this moment, without, like, without, I don't know, I don't know at this moment if, how to respond, I guess.
Madam Chair, there's nothing at this point stopping our- there's nothing at this point stopping our planning department from entering into a development agreement with the developer of this cottage property, the U-Haul property, and the Andrews Lodge property to, for one, common access onto the Malpec Road, instead of everybody going their own way and basically destroying a 40-year-old neighborhood. There's nothing stopping planning, from what I understand at least, from entering into an agreement with all three of those parties at this point, as we've been suggesting since last December.
But isn't there, like, they acquired the piece of land with a certain set of rules? And yes, we could apply new rules to that piece of land going forward. But is that, like, is, again, like, I want to find a way to make this work? It's more so, I guess, just a question for the planning staff. It's like, is that actually possible?
I think Jackie, what they had spoken to earlier is that there's not a single other situation in the entire city of Charlottetown that allows C2 entrance from an R1 residential area. It's just, there's no disputing that it's C2 land. But the dispute is that how come they get to enter off of a residential, completely residential area? There's not even a store out there. And so, their passion for this is because why can't they come off of Malpec Road? Is what they're saying, I think.
And I kind of think that's a fair point. Like, you know? Because again, like, it's not what we're taught, like, it's not what's before us here today. But I think it's a very valid point. It's like, say, the example of the trucking company. And, you know, it's not, it doesn't strike me as, like, it's not before us right now. I won't derail anymore, but I hear what you're saying.
Madam Chair, if we do go for reconsideration, this would take care of the process, similar process to rezoning. And if this issue of entrance and access point could be sorted out, then the city can issue, can the city issue a fresh development permit or, you know, asking for a new access to Malpec Road?
Great question. David?
Through the chair, Sen, a very good question. So, I want to clarify that 18 Trainer Street, I have the air photo up on the screen right now. There is an existing public road access right to Trainer Street as it bends into Katy Drive. That would, that's technically, that's the legal road access along the frontage for that lot. We don't allow a lot to have its only means of access across another property. Like, a property, each to their own, has to have its own public road frontage to allow for its own public road access. It's not impossible that this property could, through an easement or a registered agreement, have a second access across the property to the east accessing Malpec Road. But those two owners would have to agree to that. The city as well, Public Works would have some response on that. But it wouldn't, we can't close that access to Trainer Street because that's the only legal access the lot actually has. If you close that, you know, it wouldn't meet zoning. You can't access public road through someone else's lands. Although you could possibly do that as an alternative form of access if you still have your main access onto a public road or you have a access onto a public road, as they do now. So, it's possible. But again, it's not just the city. It's those two owners have to agree to that. And we're not aware that they've entertained that or that they're at that point that they may agree to that. But I just want to say it's possible.
And just to make a statement there, David, I understand. But if we go through the process, then there might be a solution moving forward. You know, obviously, you know, just like any, the reconsideration process would require extensive public consultation. And, you know, the affected property would also have to be, you know, taken into confidence before, along with Public Works, before that reconsideration process, the outcome, you know, finalizing the outcomes of the reconsideration process. Now, I do believe that an error was made because, you know, and I agree with, you know, I understand the empathize with the sentiments of the residents there because, you know, a commercial zone should not have that access to largely, you know, mostly residential area. I think I'm convinced that we may have to go through the reconsideration process. So, I'm not sure, Madam Chair. I know there is already a resolution for deferral. If we first have to vote for the resolution and then, you know, or it can be, you know, and then go back to the, you know, the original resolution.
Okay, so Lee, do you want to leave your resolution on and you want these folks to vote? Or do you want to rescind your resolution? I can do that, can't you? Yeah. Okay, so, Lee is rescinding. Do I have somebody to second that? Seconded by Counselor Beck. Okay, so, new resolution on the floor. Someone want to move a resolution? Counselor Beck. Right, so, the original recommendation is, the resolution that's on the floor is to accept staff's recommendation. So, you'll move it, and, you know, and then we're moving the recommendation in the idea that then you'll choose to vote to either support the recommendation or not.
Well, we have to vote.
I know, exactly.
I thought Sen just said that he thinks that there are grounds to reconsider, and staff's recommendation is to not reconsider. And you're putting a motion to not reconsider.
No, I'm just getting the motion on the floor.
To reconsider.
And I'm gonna speak to it.
Oh, sorry.
So, right, so the motion will be on the floor. Moved by Counselor Beck. Does someone want to second staff's, the motion? Okay, moved, seconded by Lee. So now, we have the motion on the floor with the option to accept staff's recommendation or to vote against that and not accept it, which then would prompt going to council with the planning board's recommendation for a reconsideration. Is that right?
Through the chair, so hypothetically, if the motion that's on the floor is the motion, our recommendation in our report, and you voted down, you deny that, then by virtue of that, the alternative would be that it moves on to council and effectively, the planning board has differed in their opinion to staff and is recommending the opposite of that, so.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Beck.
Yeah, so I think if we defeat this motion, it has to go to council, correct? Right.
Through the chair, it has to go to council either way.
Either way.
But.
And the other thing is, is that we also have to be able to support why we are going against staff's recommendation too. So, in this particular situation, I do agree with Sen. I think that, for me, the crux of this issue is the access point. And the only way we're going to get to having a discussion about the access point is through reconsideration. And that's the only thing that I think that we can get to right now. So, I am going to vote against the motion because I think, like, the work is going to continue, whether we defer, defeat, deny, whatever. That train is going on clearly, and that is going to continue up for the next three, four, however many months. So, I respectfully acknowledge the work done by planning department. I respectfully acknowledge the 29-page document that the residents have clearly put a lot of thought into, have gone through the steps of Iraq. I think we have to go through, giving all this. I think we have to look at a reconsideration. Whatever comes out of it at the end, hopefully, we can come up to some mediation in the meantime to come up with a workable solution. Because right now, we're into, we have two camps that cannot cohabitate together. And so, I'm gonna vote against it. I moved it, but I'm gonna vote to go against council's decision. And I say, or staff's, right, staff's decision, and.
So, if there's no other questions, we can call the question unless somebody else has a question. Did you want to comment, David, before we vote?
Through the chair, I just wanted to say, and maybe this has been said before, that at the end of the day, and I appreciate the comments, Counselor Beck on both sides, that there is merit to both arguments, for sure. At the end of the day, we were in a position where we evaluated the permit, found it to be as of right, and we had to issue it on that basis. And we even got legal opinion that kind of reaffirmed that after the fact. And I can, I really appreciate the arguments of Mr. Wolfrey. I do understand where the residents are coming from, I really do. But we were kind of between a rock and a hard place where we had something, had we not issued it, and it's kind of written in our report, you know, developer could have come after, sued the city possibly for denying them their development rights. So, that was kind of the situation we were cast into. I just want to.
And I don't, that wasn't lost on me at any point, Dave. And so, I fully appreciate that, and I fully understood that. So, that's kind of why I don't want to take this as a slap against the professional staff. You didn't do your job or anything like that. You did, I think you did. And I think you did what you were charged to do. And we're just in, we're in the situation that we're in. And have find a way.
So, the question, question is called, so, "All those in favor of staff's recommendation to not recommend to council for reconsideration?" All those in favor of not reconsidering? You're in favor of not reconsidering? Okay. Sen?
Against the staff recommendation, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, so then, all those against staff's recommendation. Okay, and so that.
Against staff's recommendation.
Okay, so that's, everyone is against staff's recommendation except for Lee. And, okay, so, that will go on to council with staff's recommendation to not reconsider and planning board's recommendation to reconsider. And that will go on to council for council's decision. Gotcha. Okay, thank you for that. Any new business? If not, motion to adjourn? Moved by Jackie, seconded by Counselor Beck. All those in favor? Great, thank you.
In favor.